Before we begin, I'd just like to remember, yesterday was Friday and Sunday here in New buryport and ahead of Memorial, so just remember all the first responders who respond to our needs and all around the US and the world and put their lives in danger for us so we can live here for the -- Have them on the sound, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city council meeting is over. I was happy, Mr. President. Councilor Cronin.
President.
Council Devlin.
President.
Council Earl.
President.
Council O'Brien.
Here.
All presidents. Councilors will see on their desks the following. In addition to the mayor's update, there are three emergency preamble to go with Orders 36, Communication 76, and Communication 73. Essentially, the timing, there are matters that will not be -- that are time-sensitive before our next meeting on the 26th. There are two named City Service Committee items that are on your desk. One is Communication 68, which is about the IC card, and the other is Ordinance 6. And those are the items.
Will you agree to the rules and accept the wait by items?
Second. Just a quick point order. Is there a written mayor's update?
No.
Okay. I'm all set, then.
On the favor?
Aye.
Vote.
I wanted to address the transient vendor licenses again on each street, and I know we're going to have another reading on that ordinance. We voted a couple of weeks ago to add a fourth transient vendors license so that there would be two earmarked food vendors and hopefully two earmarked for artisans. I have a tiny folks to vote on, and this is a five-by deadlock, and our councilor jumped and wasn't able to vote at that time. What I took away from the meeting a couple of weeks ago, it seemed like the overwhelming feeling was that the Birken mortar stores downtown were the driving force behind really not wanting to add vendor licenses, and I think that's where the lines are blurred between the fares that we do Memorial Day Weekend, Labor Day, and Yankee Homecoming and the transient vendors license on In Street. So I took it upon myself, I visited 21 random stores in downtown, and I -- you each have an attachment with that information, and I gave them an overview of what I thought the transient vendors were and what I wanted to do into a person. All 21 of them were in support of adding a fourth transient vendor license, so that two could be earmarked for artisans. So I'm hoping that we can revisit that tonight when you folks do the reading on the amendment. And then last, in 2013, this city became the 19th community in the state to earn designation as a cultural district. I think that's really important. This was a campaign championed by Mayor Holliday and leaders of the Newburyport art community. Kathleen O'Connor-Ive states, "The designation identifies the city as a unique destination for visitors, artists, and business development." So I certainly feel we wouldn't be hurt by having more artisans on In Street. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Four Fruit Street, can't read the name. Coming from Four Fruit Street.
Four Fruit Street.
Four Fruit.
Jim Roy.
It is, isn't it?
Jim Roy. Four Fruit Street. I'm here to talk about the garage. I don't want to bore everyone here with a lot of institutional history about this, but having said that, I think I will. In 1978, Mayor Richard Sullivan appointed me to the Traffic and Parking Committee. Six years later, I became the chairman of that committee, and I held that post for over two decades. I think we spent something in the vicinity of $425,000 on studies, consultants, had all these meetings, went through the whole thing of strong-arming city councilors, the whole deal, and we came up short all three times. In 1996, by one vote of the supermajority, and in 2005, again, by one vote. Now, as I look around the table here, at the city councilors, the clerk, the mayor, the only two veterans of all that are myself and the city council president. We're the ones with the wounds. So now, we're at the fourth reiteration of this, and I would really hope that we can go forward with this project now. There has so much been done on this subject, so much work, the need for it is so obvious. The canard I've been hearing recently is that somehow or another, this is some sweet deal for KARP, that it's a way to grease the way for Waterfront West. I think the mayor addressed that in a letter to the editor a couple of days ago. They're entirely separate, even though KARP is obviously a principle in both deals. But the garage is necessary for the waterfront. As the NRA chairman spoke in his letter to the editor this last week, if we don't get this garage, we're not going to remove tons of this traffic off the waterfront, as I think the citizens of Newburyport have expressed they want done. So I understand the last few days have been very difficult for several councilors with this purchase and sale agreement. I realize there's some animosity on the part of some councilors towards the mayor's office or towards the bureaucratic entity of the city, towards KARP's lawyers, and I would just hope, in this final thing about the purchase price, that you can remember that poster, that famous poster from World War II when London was undergoing the Blitz, and they were in all over the undergrounds, and all these posters that say, "Stay calm and carry on." So I'm hoping that's what will be done tonight, and in the next couple of days, we will stay calm, carry on, and get this thing done, so that I don't have to come back here 15 years from now and do this all again.
Thank you. Pam Catcher.
If you can catch your fifteen Washington Street, I promise this is only two minutes intended. I urge you to take as much time as needed to ensure questions and concerns regarding the garage and the P&amp;S are answered and addressed before taking a vote. Here are a couple of my concerns. The MBR TA will have spent a great deal of money. It makes sense that they would protect their investment by making sure parking spaces are available for their riders, and only their buses can use the drop-off pickup area. However, what do they mean by having 45 spaces available? They are available for MBR TA bus riders all day until a certain time, something else? A reserved space for any amount of time is a non-income generating space, especially as current MBR TA bus ridership is extremely low. In the packet for tonight's meeting, there's a proposal by Epsilon Associates regarding an air quality analysis for the city. When will the study be done and what are the parameters? There's currently a state law regarding idling. You cannot idle for more than five minutes because of the impact to health. There will not only be cars, but diesel buses stopping at the garage on a daily basis, and there'll be backups and cars idling in the area. The traffic and health concerns go hand in hand. The more traffic, the greater the emissions and the greater the impact to those around it. The city has said in the initial traffic study, Phase 1, was done with the presumption that the majority of the traffic to downtown is already coming down Merrimack Street. During the May 17 Planning Board and Historical Commission meeting, the traffic person on the design team had no response when the board members asked how traffic coming from Route 95 would be directed to the garage. She actually seemed completely surprised and perplexed by the question. The city has continued to say that nearly all the traffic will come in via Merrimack Street. However, Route 95 is a great source of incoming traffic. I would suggest the majority. In fact, the Chamber of Commerce's website has a page for directions in every single option, from 95, from Boston, from Route 495, as you're coming off of Exit 57 from Route 95. The Phase 2 traffic study needs to include not only the Route 1 Merrimack Street intersection, but also the streets the city would direct those coming off of Route 95 to use to get to the garage. And as we know, people will use other streets in an effort to avoid traffic and seek free parking. The traffic congestion and planned for resident-only type of restrictions all need to be carefully considered. Again, all these cars coming into neighborhoods will have a great impact on traffic, air quality, and health. Please consider all these when making decisions affecting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Except for public comment, we'll have the mayor's comment.
Because there is such a comprehensive agenda tonight, I will send you an update at a later point during the week and get it posted on the city blog. Instead, I'm going to use my time at this point to give a proclamation, a resolution regarding climate change. And the attendees behind me are all from groups who have been addressing these issues. I have the Newburyport Energy Advisory Committee, Clean Tech Center, Echo Collaborative, Storm Surge, Union of Concerned Scientists, Knott Middle School, Newburyport High School, Joppa Flats Education Center, Transition Newburyport, Hall and Moscow, Friends of Newburyport Trees, the First Religious Society Church, and the Gulf of Maine Institute. And this is just an example of the groups that are working in our community to address various aspects of climate change. So, the resolution for the city of Newburyport. The city of Newburyport has a longstanding commitment to environmental stewardship, beginning with the city's pledge in 2005 to the United States Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, the city's designation in 2010 as a green community in the state of Massachusetts, and the many environmental energy and waste reduction measures undertaken. Whereas the city of Newburyport is a coastal community that has already seen effects of climate change and subsequent storm surge and...
Whereas the city recognizes and is developing a resilience plan and programs to protect its critical infrastructure, assets, and natural resources and...
Whereas the city joins the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as the leader of clean energy, where the clean energy sector has grown to contribute $11.8 billion in economic activity.
Whereas the city embraces a forward-thinking public policy and action agenda that supports the transition to a cleaner, more resilient, more cost-effective economy, and recognizes the need to continue to modernize energy infrastructure, encourage clean energy transportation options, and plan for innovations in the energy sector and...
Whereas the city will continue to be proactive on a local level to help secure a stronger national energy future, and will continue to invest in renewable energy and energy efficiencies. Increase efforts to cut greenhouse gas emissions and help in creating a clean energy economy for the health and welfare of future generations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Newburyport joins with the United States Climate Mayors to honor the Paris Climate Agreement goals. Given under my hand and seal this 12th day of June in the year 2017, Donna D. Holliday. Thank you.
The approval for the minutes for May 30, 2017. There are two transfers. Transfer 35, sewer retained earnings $675,000 to FY '18 budget reserve, same amount, budget and finance. Transfer 36, water retained earnings $300,000 to meter replacement project $100,000, water main replacement project $200,000, again, to budget and finance. Following Communication 69, air quality analysis for the intermodal facility to go to planning and development. Communication 70, police report on taxi inspections, June 6, 2017, from Sergeant Whitney, to be received and filed. Communication 71, A-frames, Firehouse Center for the Arts, request to license and permits. Communication 72, Table and Market Square Exchange Club, 819 and 826, license and permits. A-frame request, Harbor Creamery on Pleasant Street, license and permits. Block Party, Dove Street, August 5, to public safety. Communication 77, appointment of Mary Karabatos, excuse me, my apologies, on the NAHA board. Appointments, following. Appointment 44, Madeline Nash, 19 Arlington Street Affordable Housing Trust, until 5/1/2018. Skipping to Appointment 46, Richard A. Eaton, 4 Horton Street, Trust Fund Committee, 7/1/2020. Appointment 47, Richard J. O'Brien, 41 Olive Street, Trust Fund Committee, 7/1/2020. With that, one change in appointments, that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to amend and add public utilities to Transfer 35 and 36, please.
Done.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 01105, 3116, second reading and trans.
It's under consent agenda.
I didn't see that volume. Forget it, man.
Motion approved and amended. Second. All in favor? Aye. Vote.
Come on. Communications. Emergency preamble?
Yes, correct, Mr. President. It's an emergency preamble for that communication, states as follows.
I got it right here if I need it.
This would be for...
73.
73.
Yeah.
73.
Thank you. Pursuant to Section 2-9b and further defined in Section 177, an emergency exists such that the dates of the placement of the table on Market Square occur before the next council meeting, which is the 26th. Therefore, the city council affirmatively declares that an emergency exists such that this Communication 73 may be voted upon at its first introduction. Submitted, Council Tantar.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Vote. A roll call. Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien. Thank you.
Yes.
Communication 76 also has an emergency preamble, Mr. President.
Pursuant to Charter, Section 2-9, as further stated, emergency exists due to the dates of the block party occurring before the next council meeting. Therefore, the city council hereby affirmatively declares an emergency. Submitted, Council Tantar.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call. Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien. Yes. Move on to orders.
First order is FY 2018 revolving fund. It is right here. It is... It names the revolving fund, it names the FY spending limit. There are two pages of them. It is submitted by Counselor Tantar. Would you like me to read anything from that?
Just the...
Name and email?
Yeah, a few of them, that's all.
Engineering services, $90,000. Council on Aging, $35,000. Recreational services, $370,000. Historic commission, $2,500. Electrical inspector, $95,000. Plumbing inspector, $65,000. Gas inspector, $40,000. Disabilities commission, $3,000. Emma Andrews, $30,000. Middle school drop-in center, $45,000. Transient vendors, $20,000. Planning and zoning, $70,000. Animal control, $6,000. Tree commission, $10,000. Medicare, Medicaid, $25,000. Veterans benefits, $2,000. Downtown paid parking, $750,000. City hall maintenance, $5,000. Senior Community Center, $15,000. And Parks Commission, $15,000. A total of $1,693,500.
Clarifications, parks, meetings.
Thank you. Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion, Counsel Z.
The Ward for Counsel, except committee of the whole, is in addition for posting and discussion purposes.
Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
In accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, $475,000 of $952,595, unexpended balance of funds borrowed to pay the cost for the Bresnahan Elementary School project, which were no longer needed to complete such project and were appropriated by this council to pay additional cost for the Knott-Molin School project by order passed April 10, 2017, shall hereby be appropriated for the paving of the parking lot at the Knott-Molin School, including planning, design, landscape, site prep, lighting, and all other incidental costs related thereto. Submitted, Council Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Order 32 reads as follows. In accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, $475,000 of $952,595, unexpended balance of funds borrowed to pay the cost for the Bresnahan Elementary School project, which were no longer needed to complete such project and were appropriated by this council to pay additional cost for the Knott-Molin School project by order passed April 10, 2017, shall hereby be appropriated for the paving of the parking lot at the Knott-Molin School, including planning, design, landscape, site prep, lighting, and all other incidental costs related thereto. Submitted, Council Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion.
The Ward for Counsel, except committee of the whole, is in addition for posting and discussion purposes.
Sure.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
Order 32 reads as follows. In accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, $475,000 of $952,595, unexpended balance of funds borrowed to pay the cost for the Bresnahan Elementary School project, which were no longer needed to complete such project and were appropriated by this council to pay additional cost for the Knott-Molin School project by order passed April 10, 2017, shall hereby be appropriated for the paving of the parking lot at the Knott-Molin School, including planning, design, landscape, site prep, lighting, and all other incidental costs related thereto. Submitted, Council Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second. Aye. Vote.
34.
34 is labeled on your agenda, Parsons Street, but it's actually Market Street.
And it reads as follows.
There shall be one space at 40 Market Street until June 30, 2019. A handicap space, I should say. Submitted, Counselor Cronin.
Motion for public safety.
Second. Aye. The next order, Mr. President, is a budget order, which we submit every year without amounts. It has... Yeah, we have always taken it at the same time that the submitted proposed budget, which is Communication 51 in Budget and Finance.
Right. So motion to waive the rules and consider Order 35 with... Is it Communication 51?
Second.
You want to take the budget now, is that what you want?
Yes.
Take the budget now?
Okay.
Get them out of here. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Yeah. All those poor recycling bins. Good to go. Look at first page. Yeah. Where's Ethan? There he is. He's here. Yep, need to double check. See what I do. Thank you. Very nice. Here you go, sir. It's actually 46. See line by line. I think. Let's cut the mayor. Mayday ready? We are ready. Want me to run it? You want to run it. Okay. I could do it. You're up. Page 47. Run through it.
Page 46, right?
Forty, wow, 46, 47.
Forty-six, shoot.
Must have a lot of cuts in that page. Any cuts on 46? Eighty-four. Police Department.
Up and down. Down we go to... House Department. One hundred. Animal Control.
I do, but I don't.
One oh one.
I do, too. I want to talk to Ethan.
One oh eight.
Sixty-four, wrong? Sixty-four, comma, zero-two-oh, comma, seven-oh-three, point-nine-nine.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah.
We did.
Yes. Can I ask who made the motion? Second in by?
Counsel. Thank you.
Counselor Cronin?
Bill? If we can discuss for one...
Okay.
I just think it's important for people to, that are maybe here for another reason, to understand that we just didn't blow through a sixty-four-million-dollar budget in seven minutes, and that the city council has had a series of workshops over numerous nights in which we vetted this budget with department heads and other members of staff, and this is how we got here tonight, even though there are no cuts. Thank you.
Go ahead. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes. It's pretty amazing. I don't think I've ever been on a... Preamble for Order thirty-six, on thirteen budgets, nothing like that. Preamble for Order thirty-six is as follows, pursuant to the same sections, two-nine-B, further defined in Section one-seven. An emergency exists due to the resolution establishing June as Gay Pride Month, and the next council meeting does not occur until June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Therefore, the city council hereby affirmatively declares that an emergency exists. Submitted Counsel Cronin.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Preamble for Order thirty-two reads as follows. In accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, four hundred and seventy-five, section twenty-one, four hundred and seventy-two, four hundred and seventy-three, four hundred and seventy-four, four hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and seventy-six, four hundred and seventy-seven, four hundred and seventy-eight, four hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty-one, four hundred and eighty-two, four hundred and eighty-three, four hundred and eighty-four, four hundred and eighty-five, four hundred and eighty-six, four hundred and eighty-seven, four hundred and eighty-eight, four hundred and eighty-nine, four hundred and ninety, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred and ninety-one, four hundred and ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and ninety-four, four hundred and ninety-five, four hundred and ninety-six, four hundred and ninety-seven, four hundred and ninety-eight, four hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and ninety-ten, four hundred
And whereas through public discussion and education, including the exhaustive work of the City of Newburyport Human Rights Commission, equal and full recognition of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, their friends and families in the City of Newburyport is now a fundamental right, recognized by all. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. June 2017 shall be recognized as Pride Month in the City of Newburyport, and that the fundamental rights and accomplishments of all people, regardless of sexual orientation, shall be recognized and celebrated. Submitted, Councilor Robert J. Cronin.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Mr. President, could we take the next two collectively, 37 and 38?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, 37, 38 together.
The vote read as follows. One is for, the vote for 2017 Construction News Water Sewers Grain Layer Roadway and Sidewalk Work.
One is for Northern Drill Services, 130 East Main Street, Northborough, Mass. Submitted, Councilor Ragaman. Second is, same as before, except it's Brennan Construction, Inc., 105 Main Street, Salem, Mass. Also submitted by Councilor Ragaman.
Motion to refer to committee on public utilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This ordinance is in the packet as a second reading. It's my understanding that there are some motions to be made on it that, if substantive in nature, and I believe they are, that would be a first reading. It is the ordinance regarding transient vendors, hawkers, and peddlers, which has a number of pages to it, is frankly a complete rewrite. And it is submitted by Counselor Ragaman and Devlin.
Motion to amend. Mr. President, my amendment motion is, it was brought to my attention that we didn't have an effective date put in, and out of courtesy to the Licensing Commission, licenses really have been given out for the summertime season. So I would propose just to put at the very beginning of the ordinance, even, you know, in the heading, this ordinance shall take effect on January 1st, 2018.
Is there a second on that?
Motion to amend and effective date, January 1st, 2018, and we'll put it in the title.
We're discussing that amendment?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Counselor Earls?
I'd also like to propose an amendment. Section 9-114A, where no more a total of three full-seasoned licenses, change that to four. And later on in the paragraph, add at least two such licenses shall be granted to artisans. So the numbers changed, the first number being from three to four, the second number being from one to two.
Second.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Just a point of clarification, Counselor. So on 9-114A, where it says three full-season licenses? It'll be four. It changed that to four. And then the second change was?
At least two such licenses will be granted to an applicant, artisan, primary businesses and artisans.
Second to the last sentence.
Page five.
Thank you.
Same section, same paragraph.
I got you.
Mr. President, motion to approve as amended on first reading.
Note, second advised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved as amended and a first reading. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Ragaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you, you guys. Ordinance 15. My understanding is there's also a motion to amend on this? No, it's not? Okay. So it's a second reading. It is Article 4, Division 7, 25 miles per hour speed zones. Short title, 25 miles per hour. Purpose and intent is to satisfy under Chapter 90 that the local authority now has, granted by the state legislature, the ability to regulate our roadways down to 25 miles per hour. It is submitted by Counselors Cronin and Zied.
Motion approved.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Ragaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
One no, 10 yes. Second reading, ordinance passes.
I'm just thinking of you. You? I want to, ordinance seven.
Ordinance seven is, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance by changing the table of use regulations in the I-2 zone from not permitted to permitted for two uses, professional, social services, and corporate headquarters. Submitted, Counselor Tantar.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Mr. President, this is a request from Merson, the owners of Merson and the Kane Brothers. As some people may know, earlier this year, they proposed an expansion of the parking lot. They wanted to build 80, either apartments or condos, and a parking garage across the street in what is now the parking lot. On the current structures that exist, after doing a fairly thorough marketing study, they had concluded that the best and highest use of that building was for corporate headquarters and/or professional services. That is not permitted now in the I-2 district. There are only two structures in the I-2 district. One is this Merson property, Merson Building property. The other is the toll building that has an overlay district on it that allowed other uses. So this is, again, I-2, changed to I-2, but it's just, it's pretty specific to this one site. In committee, speaking with the planning director, we do have some concerns over the parking lot side of it, and we just, in committee, I think we will address that. I have been assured that there is no intent to build on that side, but we may want to consider. Of course, if we don't change it, it still is permitted for industrial purposes.
All in favor?
Huh?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Going to committee. Just to committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it for ordinances, committee item, budget and finance. Looks like you got a slow night.
Have a few items, Mr. President. Motion to remove Transfer 18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls, go ahead.
Motion to refer and file.
Receive and file. Thank you. Receive and file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to remove Transfer 27. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
We discussed this previously. At the time, the fire chief was not present, so we had some questions. It's a $15,000 transfer, and originally had indicated it was for repairs to Engines 1 and 2, which were new engines purchased last year. In committee, the fire chief appeared before us, and actually, $10,000 of it is for repair of the ladder truck, including hydraulic lines, rear axle, exhaust manifold, and batteries. Sounds a lot like my car, and that need to be repaired. And $5,000 for the Engine 1 and Engine 2. Engine 1 and Engine 2, mostly under warranty. There was some damage to the tires, and there was some damage to the seat belts. So getting out quickly, I guess the seat belts, they tried to get them covered by warranty, but they weren't, they did not win that. So that's $15,000. It was a 3-0 vote in committee to approve the $15,000 transfer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion to remove Transfer 29.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Go ahead.
Motion to remove Transfer 30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second. Solid waste, $24,000.
To household hazardous waste and salary recycle energy manager, $12,007.
Right. Mr. President, this is sort of the normal way that we pay for these positions for transfers.
Motion to approve.
I don't know what we're going to.
Yep, yep, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to remove Transfer 31. Library salary staff, 10K to library maintenance equipment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to approve.
Second.
This is, we passed a 10K transfer at the last meeting for the HVAC. It required more work than it first anticipated, and so 3-0 vote in committee to approve.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question for the committee. The only thing that concerns me about this one is that it says with these, we will have had $41,000 in repairs this fiscal year. Seems like an awful lot of money. I mean, at what point are we just going to replace this HVAC system if it's costing us 40 grand a year to keep up and running? And I don't recall seeing it in CIP, but maybe somebody can correct me if my memory is failing me. So that's my only question is, are we throwing good money out for bad here? If the President will allow? Would you like to address that?
Generally, you'd be putting about $15,000, $16,000 into the budget for HVAC. It's part of a bigger line item for equipment maintenance for the library. And usually, we're somewhere in the ballpark for that, but as we've been told by the HVAC vendors, 16 years is now old in the life of a heating system and air conditioning system. So this year, we did a bunch of things that the facilities maintenance manager, Mike Bartlett, believes will take care of a lot of those things, so that next year, we'll probably return to, you know, a more normal amount of money. So hopefully, we won't have. And we were in an unusual position this year in that we had some excess salary funds because we had some staff leave, and that's not typically the case either. So hopefully, next year, we'll be more in the normal pattern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ragaman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wonder if I could ask our learned colleague from Ward 5 to ballpark what it would cost to replace a whole system like this?
No question. Just off the top of your head.
Let me write this down. It's really hard to say because I actually don't know what the system is at the library, and I don't know the tonnage of the system. I imagine if the system's running on one or two machines, they're probably very large and, you know, paying prevailing wage and such, so it'll be a larger number than you think. That's generally the way it works out, so.
Well done.
I'm very interested in finding out on the side, maybe from Mike Bartlett or yourself, what the repairs are that they did.
I have been listening to you have been providing.
Yeah, I'd love to take a look at them and see what type of work they're doing on 16-year-old equipment. So, thank you.
You know, it's open till 9:00. You could get there and get back here to give us.
Yeah, that's right, absolutely. What's your, what's your prevailing wage? It's high.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls, go ahead. Motion to remove Transfer 32, free cash to snow and ice labor and snow and ice expenses. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion to approve?
This year, for the public, the actual amount spent on snow removal was $433,604. That of course includes salt and sand. So that is $233,604 more than we had budgeted for it. We normally budget a relatively small amount rather than put a large amount. If we had a winter like last winter where it didn't snow, then that money would be in that line, and so this is the normal way to do it. Looking at past couple of years, last year, total spending, 218. Two years ago, 885,496, 418,000 three years ago, so it's right in there. Salt prices especially keep going up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Go ahead. Motion to remove Transfer 33. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion to approve. This is free cash of $25,000 to the city solicitor.
I'd just like to rise in support of this transfer. I think most residents probably know how busy the city is, but there's been a lot of talk about retaining expertise when you need it. So we're damn well going to spend money on a lawyer if we need it in this room, I can tell you that. And we've dealt with a lot of big things this year, and I'm happy to transfer this money if that's what we need to do, and we listen to the advice and we use it. So my only hope is that, you know, we've got not too much longer. Hopefully, we won't need any more because we're going to freeze our free cash going into July. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to remove Transfer 34, free cash, $70,000 to fire overtime.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve.
President, this transfer is necessary. The staffing level on all fire trucks and during any shift is seven. When firefighters are out, either because of bereavement, sick leave, vacation, firefighters have to be called in so that they get seven people on, on all the pieces of equipment. And so this passed 3-0 in committee to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to remove.
Order 27, loan order intermodal parking facility land acquisition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, I'll be stepping away. You gotta get out. Mr. President, for the record, if I'm recusing myself.
Mr. President, motion to amend.
Counselors have left the room, please.
It's right after the city clerk's contract.
Yeah, no, I forgot that. I lost that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll hand a copy of the amendment to the.
No, I'm talking about this.
Terribly, I'll read it first. So the Order 27, in the third line, after further ordered that, it reads as follows. $2,184,000 is appropriated to pay costs of purchasing a portion of that property located at 90 Pleasant Street and 83 Merrimack Street, open parentheses, as shown on the attached plan, close parentheses. I would move to add the following language at this point. On the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, as revised by email dated June 8th, 2017, and timestamped 3:16 PM, to attorney Jonathan D. Eichmann, comma, a copy of which is on file with the city clerk, comma, as confidential work product. If I may speak to the amendment before we vote on it. So the city council received a copy of the purchase and sale agreement about three weeks ago, roughly. And last week, several of us, fewer than, less than a quorum, of course, met in person with Chief Administrative Officer Paul O'Brien and Andy Port, the planning director, to go over some details in the purchase and sale agreement. Again, it's work product. It hasn't been signed yet by either party. It would be signed first by the seller of the property, New England Development, but there were some things that we wanted to tighten up, and all of the counselors here tonight have had an opportunity, if they wish, to read the tightening up that we sent through the city solicitor, Jonathan Eichmann. So I will summarize them here so that everybody, all the counselors know what it was about, and they're not that, they're not that major or lengthy, and also members of the public. So first, a goal is stated in the press and in reports by staff and the mayor and others. We wanted to make clear in the purchase and sale agreement that there is no obligation to use that land for a parking garage necessarily, because the order is only to acquire the There will be future orders, I suspect, that will come in to authorize the construction cost. So the purchase and sale agreement was looked at to make sure that the recitals, for example, did not imply that there was an expectation that there must be a garage built on this site. And that becomes important as well because the sale price, the sale price is based on the fair market value of the land. Whereas if you were to limit the use of the land to a parking garage, that would be something less than fair market value. That's why we were careful to make that recommendation to the city solicitor. Another amendment that we worked on and is referenced in this motion has to do with representations and warranties by the seller. It's very common in a, in a commercial transaction such as this, that it be an as-is deal. The seller is not guaranteeing any particular condition of the property. They sell it, and we have 45 days due diligence to check it out, kick the tires. But in this case, we wanted to make sure that we had everything in the actual knowledge of the seller. So they don't have any duty to go investigate for us, again, totally normal, but the agreement needed to name a local executive who has personal knowledge of the property. So for example, if there were contamination at the property, that person would know, and they would turn it over to the city. So everything is transparent. So that was another change that we recommended and passed on to the city solicitor. I'm flipping through because, again, there aren't that many. As has been stated before publicly, I believe, in order to avail ourselves of the $1.5 million in federal money if we were to construct the project, there is a rule that the federal government imposes that you cannot take the property by eminent domain if you're going to use that 1.5 million. Therefore, there is language in the purchase and sale agreement whereby we covenant that we will not use eminent domain. The language was recommended to the city solicitor, and the city solicitor agreed to clarify that the reason for that is because of the federal rule. So so long as we were taking the federal money and using their relocation rules, we cannot use eminent domain. But that is the limit of the limitation of eminent domain. If the deal blows up and we don't take the federal money, the power of eminent domain is a sovereign power, kind of like declared war, actually, that's delegated to us by the state legislature. We've made clear that we have not given that up. Next, there is a remainder parcel. Remainder parcel is about 7,000 square feet. So the entire contiguous land that is owned by New England Development at this site is over 30,000 square feet in size, about 36. However, we're only taking 29,000. We do not need, and we've debated this both in closed session and publicly, whether we wanted to acquire the sort of thumb of the property, which is the corner of Pleasant and Titcomb. And we had directed staff that we did not want to acquire that land, so we're not paying for it. Well, that means it will be retained by New England Development. We're in an awkward position somewhat because we are the government. So although as an abutter, it would be normal maybe to ask the abutter to promise to support development at that parcel, that is not something that we wanted to do in this case because we have boards and commissions that have to review that project, whatever it is. And I want to make clear for the record, there are no plans. We don't know what New England Development would do with that land. We don't know if they would sell it. So we've recommended to the city solicitor that that language about cooperating with them on development of that remainder parcel be removed because it is hard to reconcile with our police powers in regulating development of land. Almost done, I swear. Again, there is no obligation under this agreement, and we've made clear of that, as had the city solicitor in the mayor's office, there's no obligation to use the land in any particular way, and that includes, for example, reserving parking spaces for New England Development or anybody else, talking about this purchase and sale agreement. However, there is a concern that what if we never went forward with the garage and we flipped the property to a third party? So we, for example, went to another developer and said, here, take it and build a hotel. So the seller has negotiated in good faith for a right of first refusal, meaning a right to match, to match any offer. So again, hypothetical, may not ever happen, say, seven years from now, we haven't done anything with the land. It's completely fallow. We haven't striped it as a parking lot. We haven't built a parking garage, and our, our future city council and future mayor at that time, whoever that is, says we want to get rid of it. If it goes out to bid and someone, a third party comes in and says, here's $3.5 million, so long as it is matched exactly by New England Development, they have an opportunity to put down their $3.5 million and take the property back. But again, the key term is it has to be the same, the same terms. Finally, let's see. Finally, there is a clause which is very normal, which says that the agreement itself is not going to be recorded at the registry of deeds. That's, again, that's very normal. What gets recorded at the registry of deeds is the actual deed and any restrictions and so on. But the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, just as when you buy a home, is not put on record. That would not be put on record. But we wanted to clarify that that was the intention, that it only had to do with not putting it on record, whereas our understanding, passed through the city councilor, is once this document is executed by both parties, it will become a public record, so somebody could ask for it under the public records law. And we wanted to clarify that again, because we're special, we're a government agency, we're not a private party. And those, Mr. President, are all of the substance of the changes. Thank you.
Counselor Zied?
I'd like to speak for a few minutes, if I may. First of all, there's a couple of things I want to clarify, just so I make crystal clear what my understanding is. The Ward 2 council used the word recommend to our attorneys several times. I want to make very crystal clear my understanding. The amendment that's proposed means that this is the only deal on the table from this city council should we choose to take this amendment. Now to mince words even less, this is the only way that I'm going to vote to buy this land, is if we approve this amendment. We have been around the block too much, too long. We want to buy the land, and we want to buy the land. There's no other, there's nothing else. There's no commas, there's no semicolons, there's nothing else after that. We want to buy it for fair market value, and so this is the only clean deal. I was one of the other counselors that worked on this. And to put a sharper point, the previous PNS was unacceptable and unsupportable. So I mean, we can talk, maybe each of us have different perspectives, but those are the only two words I could use for it. For those people who want the garage, we're standing here today because of the city council, not in spite of the city council. It was us that sat down and fixed up what I would consider to be a fairly crummy agreement, unacceptable. consider to be a fairly crummy agreement, unacceptable and unsupportable. That's number one. Number two, we are a huge distance away, in my mind, between this vote and building a garage. Grand canyon-sized hole in between the two of them. I can wrap my head around tonight buying the land at fair market value and controlling that land, because it makes common sense to me that owning land in Newburyport probably isn't a bad thing, but I'm, I'm nowhere near close, myself personally, to building a garage. And I have several things I want to say about that. Number one, the city council does not control the timeline, at all. We do not control the timeline, except when something comes into the council and we're asked to vote on it. And guess what? We do that extremely quickly. This loan order came into the council on May 31st, and we're turning it around in two weeks. You can't go faster than that, you can't post public meetings faster than meet. So I do not want to hear again about the timeline of the project. And I have said this before, I understand it's a complicated project, everybody needs their time to do what they need to do, so do we. That's, that's, that's a first important point. We didn't control last year, when the mayor decided to stop the process, the design process, for several months, when it was halted, we didn't know, we didn't have a vote on that, we didn't say stop. The year before that, the process was halted, the mayor said, "We need to step back for a second and reconvene and think." And by the way, there's nothing wrong inherently with either of those, I'm actually always one to step back and look again, but we're not going to accept the blame here for the timeline that we don't control. When things come into here, they, we, the 11 of us, agree or disagree, we work damn hard, and we get the stuff done very quickly. So the, the timeline is not on us. So folks who want to email us and say, "It's you guys, and they're not moving fast enough, you're holding it up, you're causing us to lose the money," it's simply not the case. The public record will show how quickly we move through things. And by the way, the neighbors have to spend all that time coming to these meetings, often on short notice, and residents and taxpayers who want to listen. So the city council is not, I'm not going to let it be denigrated. We do important work here, just like the design team does important work, just like the land surveyors, the planning department, the mayor's, all important. So we're not the last speed bump, we're an important part, in fact, oftentimes, some of the most public part of the process. Okay, so what's it going to take to get to the garage? Because apparently this has become something of a mystery, which is absolutely insane to me. We passed a resolution last year specifically to outline what it is we wanted to see in order to get to a garage. Here are the things that are still not clear in my mind. Number one, traffic. No one is standing here saying that the garage is supposed to fix downtown traffic. Downtown traffic is a mess, because downtown is old, and it is small, and there are really no ways for it to grow. But, we do have a duty in this room not to make the traffic worse, that's not a big deal. All you have to do is read the traffic report, which does an analysis and says it compares no build versus build, and it tells you that the quality of the intersections will fall with a garage. So let's just figure out what we have to do to fix them, this is not rocket science. And then of course, there's the other glaring hole, that the traffic study was arguably limited in scope to what everybody in town knows is one of the worst intersections in the world, Route One, Merrimack Street, and who cares if the state owns it? It is in our city, it's our responsibility to push for that, make it a priority if we need to. I've almost gotten T-boned several times there, and I know one city councillor that did get T-boned in that intersection. So, let's not make, we don't have to make the argument that we need to fix downtown, but we need to not make it worse. Okay. Number two, cost. Last year, we had a cost estimate based on very early revisions of the, of the building. Great. We got to 30% design, now we have another cost estimate, it has increased $1 million, okay? That's only at 30% design. So the fact that anybody would stand up and say, "Well, parking revenues will pay for the whole thing," is insane if you don't know how much the garage costs. How would you know if it's going to pay for itself if you don't know how much the damn thing is going to cost? So, I understand that the design team is approaching 60%, great, let's do another cost estimate, because by the way, and I mentioned this at the committee meeting, there is no room for value engineering, unless residents start telling us they're okay if we peel the brick off of this thing and make it an ugly cement piece of junk, what are we going to do? What are we going to take off of this thing in order to make it fit into the budget? Nothing. And that is different from other city projects where the Graff Road lift station comes to mind, we were able to take off a little side garage that was kind of going to be a bonus thing anyways. Number three, we have a business partner in this deal, the MVRTA. There's a lot of weight that that relationship carries. We are taking in potentially $1.5 million from them, that all sounds good, what are we giving up to get the $1.5 million? The 45 transit spaces, maybe nothing, maybe everything, I don't know until I understand it. I'm deeply concerned that the FTA is, really, the $1.5 million is vapor until they speak on it. So, let's figure out what it actually means to be partners with the MVRTA. Let's figure out if we want to have the potential for more buses to be pouring in and using the docking fee, which was mentioned last week, that was a new one for me, too. Number four, changes to the downtown parking program. We have talked about this endlessly, bringing in John Burke. I think residents and business owners would love to know what we, on the city council, are going to do to keep the parking system solvent. So, does that mean metering until 8:00 PM? Does that mean increasing or eliminating resident parking? Because I am very hell-bent on keeping this parking garage out of the tax rules, and if that means we have to raise rates further, or do other things, we are, I am going to propose them, as much as it might pain me, because I'm not going to let the parking garage spill off and go into the tax rules. So I would think, even the business owners that maybe support this, and we did receive, I received a few emails about that, I'm sure they'd love to know if we were thinking about going to 8:00 PM on the meters in order to make this stupid thing work. Okay. Last but not least, the residents of Newburyport deserve to know if there's going to be a resolution to the waterfront. The city council, through blood, sweat, and tears, many of which were my own, and I, I want to give due credit to councillor Augerman and the other folks on the ad hoc, spent a lot of time, I think my phone is dead, it can't talk anymore minutes, because it has exceeded its life in terms of speaking on the phone about the waterfront. We did our part. In this room, two weeks ago, we went unanimous that it was time to look at this framework and agree. Practically speaking, what does that mean? I'm not expecting a resolution tomorrow on every single detail, but I do want a vote from the waterfront trust, a vote from the, from the NRA, that in principle, they like the framework, and that, yeah, okay, we got to work on some details, but we spent a lot of time, and even though it was only two pages, again, every one of those words was carefully vetted and carefully clicked. Because if we build the garage and we still have parking on the waterfront, I don't think I'm going to want to show myself around town here, it, it just will be a disgrace. Okay. Last couple of things. Financially, going a little bit further about some of those changes we may have to make, we also need to confront the fact that raising from 50 cents to a dollar did not result in a doubling of our revenue. Ask the parking clerk for the numbers, don't take my word for it, go get the numbers for yourself. Common sense would dictate, and I stood here and I voted for the dollar, that I was under the impression that many people would just absorb the dollar, because a dollar's a fairly normal, normal price. It didn't happen that way. We did not go from having, you know, for, let's say, we did not go from having a dollar of revenues to $2, it was more like 40 to 60%, which means, either people aren't coming, or they're going somewhere else into the neighborhoods, which again, goes into what you have to do to the parking program, maybe having resident parking all over the place and doing all these other things. Last two points, I will not be threatened by losing grant funding, ever again. That is our money, too. If you wrote a check to the state of Massachusetts last year for your taxes, that $5 million is your money. If you wrote a check to the federal government, that's your money, even if you didn't and you filed your taxes, it's still your money. So again, we don't control the timeline, so I'm sick and tired of hearing that we're going to lose the grant funding, and the time is now, and we have to do this, and so forth. I'm also very aggravated to continue to hear that $0.5 million was lost from the FTA as a result of a shrinking of the garage. This garage was never more than 204 spaces as far as this body that sits in this room and votes. If there were discussions behind closed doors that it was going to be 350 million spaces, good, but as far as this body is concerned, we codified it in the order that we passed last year, that it was a 204 space, thank goodness, we got 207 now. So you get the idea. So if they want to take the money, go ahead. Last but not least, I am, in my personal and professional career, and I'm the youngest person on the council, maybe it's not, this is one of the most embarrassing things I've ever been a part of. I have no, I have no idea how to talk to people who want the garage, I have no idea how to talk to people who do not want the garage, I have had it. So, this is where it leaves me. I can buy the land tonight, because I can wrap my head around it, provided that this amendment passes, and that's the only deal, which by the way, is not the end of the road, it may very well be that that's not acceptable to the other party, such as life. This is the deal we're buying the land on, or we're not buying the land, and what goes from there. So this is me keeping calm and carrying on, and I would urge all of my fellow councillors to vote with me on the amendment and vote yes from now. Thank you.
Mr. Camera?
I find him very persuasive, yeah. Yeah, look, it's, it's been, it's been challenging, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into the purchase and sale, it is helpful, having a couple of lawyers on the council, I think two should be the cap, but, maybe we could get some artisans or something for the other. But, you know, obviously, look, it's, it's very contentious, I, I think, you know, I'm certainly very comfortable with this step, I think it's going to be not what a lot of people wanted, who wanted bigger and bolder, and not what other people wanted, who didn't want anything, but I think this is a good step for us. I mean, something was going to get built there, one way or the other. If we didn't, you know, put this there, and, you know, looking at old daily news, it looks like Mayor Sullivan was looking at the site back in 1978, so, you know, I, I think that's a good spot. I know we have disagreements about that, I know a lot of traffic, cost estimates, figuring out what the real construction costs are going to be, all of that needs to be worked out, you know, how the buses, you know, if it's just what we've got now, or if it's using coach, or something else, you know, many people have said in the last couple of months, you know, "We should do nothing, because everyone's going to be in self-driving cars in 10 years." I mean, we don't really know what the future holds, but I think this, you know, a central parking facility is a pretty fundamental step that a lot of other communities have taken, so I, I think it's the right move for us.
Mr. Devil?
Yes, I was one of the people that participated in the conference call with our city attorney, with the appraiser. When faced with a big issue and a large project, I break it down into steps, and that's what the last time we were presented, we were presented with enough information to move forward on the design. The next step that we're on right now is buying the property. Anybody who says that this, this was not ready to be voted on, that PNS was not, nowhere in, this is my professional opinion, that PNS was in nowhere near the shape it needed to be in to protect the citizens of Newburyport and their money. So people who say that we should have been ready to vote, and that we're holding this up, are either being political, or they're being egregious and careless. We have a duty to make sure our money is spent wisely. That is, we are told constantly by the other side of the mayor, of the, excuse me, the other side of City Hall, that we cannot get into operations, we are here to control the money and make sure it's being spent wisely. This PNS was not ready, and that was not our fault, not at all. The fact that we are able to have this vote tonight is because of the hard work of at least three of us. I dedicated at least 20 hours of my time, I get paid by the hour, I got 23 hours last week of doing the very thing that I do for a living. Been an attorney for, I think, 17, 16, 17 years, most of that's been dealing with real estate, commercial, resident real estate. This PNS, I, I gave the outline without saying anything about what it was about to one of my clients, big clients, and I said, "What would you have done if I let you sign that?" They would sue me. So, we cannot participate in that, we can't let political pressure. The idea that someone would say that this was a sweet deal for Carp, and then the mayor took out of that her letter to the editor, is an absurd and careless and lazy statement. It was a sweet deal for Carp, and that's not his problem, there's no negative connection there, I'm not making any, I'm not saying this is a backroom deal. They've got really good attorneys, and those attorneys know how to put things in a purchase and sale agreement, that, that will, we would, they would be getting a good deal. You know, that is, it was a sweet deal for Carp, we have helped level it. And so I am prepared, okay, going forward, if this is the purchase and sale agreement that they sign. If not, it affects the value of the property. So there's two things that we were looking at last week, the appraisal and the PNS. And the appraisal, we spent a lot of time on the phone with the appraiser, with our planning director, who the appraiser had a very good point. In Boston, they look for people who are the experts in that property or that neighborhood in the city government. They said, "We don't have to look in Newburyport, we have an identified expert, the only expert in the city use of regulations, in Andy Port." That was important for me to hear, and it did make me realize, it's true. And so we had a long conversation with, with planning director Port about the value of this property and about the appraisal, and also with the appraiser. They are using the customary methodology, they are licensed, they have to follow their, their rules and regulations of their licensure. It seems circular, but I'm comfortable that they, you know, that they're, they're, they're doing what somebody in the same situation, that they would do for somebody in a similar So I'm satisfied, I've also talked with real estate developers, real estate commercial brokers, and I'm satisfied that we're in the ballpark of the value for this property. But every, I, I'm going to disagree slightly with the council from Ward Two, we had 12 significant changes. They're not insignificant, and they're not brief, and they had a, they have a direct impact on the value of this property and what we can do with it. So, with those, in connection with my, with the discussions on the appraisal, I think we're in the ballpark of a good purchase price for this, this property. So, we moved on to the PNS next, we needed to safeguard that value, and I think we have safeguarded that value. One thing I would like to say, though, is we're going to buy a valuable piece of property, hopefully, hopefully they go for this, and, but that's step three. We still have step four. I don't want to hear anymore that we've been talking about a parking garage. They were talking for years about developing something on the waterfront, that's not happening now, okay? It has to be presented to us, a good argument has to be presented, you have to present evidence that backs up your argument in order to sway me. I am not obstructionist. I spent a lot of work, and so did a couple others, we're not an obstructionist council, we're trying to find a way to yes, and we're willing to work hard to find a way to yes, but we're working too hard to find that way to yes, okay? So, in the next phase, which is justifying the parking garage, we need information quickly. Our, our, our resolution on March 14th, 2016, said we needed in writing all the conditions upon the federal and state funding for the project by April 1st, 2016. We got the MVRTA agreement two weeks, three weeks ago, we had a chance to talk to Joe Costanza, someone to check before they write a letter to the editor, what's the name of the man is that they're quoting, Joe Costanza, and he said very clearly, there were some conditions that we didn't know about. That need to be fleshed out, I'm not saying that they're an end, that they're going to kill the agreement, the, the deal for me, but we need to flesh that out, we need to have those discussions, we need to know what those 45 spaces are for, and how we obtain them, and it can't just be willy-nilly, someone told me that's how government works, that's the problem. We need to make sure we understand what the 45 spaces mean, before we take the next step and fund the parking, fund the construction. The fair market value, just one last thing from, from our ordinance, our ordinance was ignored, our, excuse me, our resolution was ignored, you should take that professionally personally. Fair market value was for May 1st, 2016, that appraisal we got three weeks ago, and we got a summary of the appraisal, by the way, the appraisal's about 150 pages, we got an executive summary, three weeks ago. So, I'm still trying to find a way to yes, I'm willing to buy a piece of property under good terms for the city and the taxpayers of the city, so we've gotten that part, but there's a lot of work to be done. And, instead of casting aspersions and telling people, email them, and cast aspersions at them, tell them they're holding up, they're going to lose the money, Joe Costanza clearly said, they made the decision for the $500,000 in January of 2017, about nine months after our vote. On top of that, if there was any chance that we would lose $500,000 by voting for a 204 space garage, why was that one of the options presented to us, and that we discussed for several months before voting on it? Never once did I hear in any of that, "Well, we might lose $500,000 in federal funding, give you a vote for a smaller garage." Either that's a failure to provide the information and know the information, or, or, I don't know, I mean, it's not legitimate, we didn't lose that $500,000 because of the size of the garage because of our vote, we did lost it because of policy decision by the MVRTA, and I don't want to hear that anymore, okay? So, those are my feelings, this, I'm willing to proceed, I think we now have So, those are my feelings. This, I'm willing to proceed. I think we now have something that we can vote on. Let's try in the next step to work together, all of us, to find a way to yes, and including the mayor's office, to find a way to yes under time, a timeline that works for us. We're not full-time here. So, let's work, let's find a way to get a timeline that works for us so that we can get to the last part and finally settle something that's been talked about for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Tantar.
I also participated in the meeting last week over the purchase and sale agreement and the appraisal. And I want to very much thank councillor from Ward Two and the at-large councillor and councillor from Ward One. Councillor Cameron said that having attorneys present is extremely useful. I can tell you, I sat there. I could read a purchase and sale agreement, and until one of the two attorneys present said, "Here's the problem with it," all right, I would not have seen there being a problem with it. So, I'm very appreciative of the role they played. I was just sort of sitting there nodding my head and taking notes on that, you know, and taking their word for it. I'm not in a position to agree with the Ward Two councillor that this is brief versus the at-large councillor about it being long and deep. I think I'm happy with the suggested changes. I support the amendment very strongly. And if New England Development does not go along with the amendment, I think we're not going to be able to buy the land. Now, having said that, I'll make the second point that I want to make. I am committed to getting parking off the waterfront. I, and it's not just a narrow, small, insignificant factor, all right? Those parking lots, those dirt parking lots on the waterfront are an insult to what this city is, all right? It's, I can't tell you the number of people who've come to the city from outside and say, "What is that?" All right, it's an insult on so many levels, all right? It's urban renewal in the '60s that tore cities apart, all right? And were left. I grew up in Lowell, all right, and when, and, now, as a kid then, a little older than a big kid, and we had parking lots all over the place. We, Lowell tore down buildings and put parking lots all over the place, all right? And actually, I'm kind of fond of those parking lots. They're not there anymore, but I did have a certain fondness to them. And, but not on the waterfront. And now, why is that so important? That's important because of what this city is. We are a destination city. We are a small community of 17,000 people. 17,000 people, and a community of 17,000 people is not going to have the art galleries, is not going to have the live music, is not going to have the eating establishments and drinking establishments, is not going to have the museums, is not going to have the live theaters, all right? That, a community that is a destination community. Our character, all right, our character, all right, rests upon being a center. That's what we are. That's what Newburyport has always been, right? It is a city, and it is larger than a 17,000 individual community in Iowa. It's different. And getting the parking off the waterfront is critical for maintenance. In fact, earlier, we talked about the Merson Building. We talked about the attractiveness of Newburyport, all right, for corporate headquarters and for professional service. What makes it attractive? What makes it attractive is the downtown. What makes it attractive is that it's a beautiful place. And dirt parking lots on the waterfront don't fit. They just don't fit. Ultimately, if we can get this done, and I would agree with my colleagues, we have a ways to go in making these decisions, all right? But if we can get it done, I feel very strongly that everyone in the city, everyone, including the businesses downtown, will be much better off, and the residents will be much better off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to correct maybe a misconception by the councillor at large. I don't know if I used the word insignificant. If I did, I didn't mean it in the sense of importance. I guess what I was getting at is they're not voluminous. Oftentimes, when I go to opposing councillor, I, you know, I say, "I apologize for the sea of red ink." This is not a sea of red ink. That said, as in my amendment, which is on the floor now, I'm not voting for this order without these changes either. And in fact, the meeting that was convened last week, and I apologize, I should have named the participants, councillors Devlin, Zee, myself, and Tantar, four of us, I asked for that meeting. Also, I stand by the resolution that we passed in March. I co-authored it, co-sponsored it. So, I just want to make that clear. I do think these things are important, but the vote for us tonight is, do we take the land, as councillor Devlin said, and we worked very hard on this. We're happy with the price. We're happy with the PNS so long as these changes are adopted. And so, I'm going to go that far tonight, and I reserve judgment on the rest, and I stand by the resolution that I co-authored last year. Thank you.
Mr. Devlin?
Just a quick note. I want to thank the four councillors that worked on the purchase and sale. You know, three weeks ago, I'm a yes. I want to buy this land. I'm laser-focused. This is a good deal. I want to buy this piece of land. Then I get the purchase and sale, sit down and start reading it at home and say, "Wow, I want to buy the land, but I can't buy it with this." And I love the work they did. I love how they stripped it down. We just want to buy a piece of land. We don't want the seller telling us what we have to do with the land. We want that to be up to us. But it's a valuable piece of land. It's one more piece of the puzzle, and it went from yes, I'm definitely a yes vote to, "I don't know what I'm going to do now because this purchase and sale is unacceptable." And now, we've really, we've gone the mile to get where we needed to go, and I'm pretty happy about that. So, thank you all for the work that you did.
Mr. Devlin?
Just very quickly, I mean, the Ward Two councillor led the charge on this, so, you know, he was leading the troops on this thing, so, that's not what I meant, that he thought they were insignificant. He thought they were so significant that he was climbing over the parapet to get over the inside, so, he did an excellent job.
Do you want to vote?
On the, altogether?
Amendment.
This is.
Amendment.
This is, well, the motion on the floor is a motion to amend, and then that would need a second motion. So, the, roll call, Mr. President?
Ego. This is on?
This is just to amend the order.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, literally to amend Order 27, and the amendment was outlined by councillor Augeman on the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement as revised. I have a copy of that. He's gone through it.
I just have another question. The last statement on the property, if we have, if a garage isn't built after seven years, whatever, we'll go back to?
It's 10 years.
Oh, if I may explain, Mr. President, so, it's usually called a right of first refusal. I think for a layperson, it's really just an, it's an opportunity to match. So, the way the purchase and sale is written, if we go forward with a parking lot, note that, parking lot or parking garage, then there's no right of first refusal. There's no offer to match. It's over. However, the seller wanted a period of time that if we did not do anything with the property, it just sat there, and then we decided to sell it, usually through procurement laws that goes to the highest bidder usually, that they could match. So, the key that we put in was to wordsmith it so it is a true match. They must match exactly the terms of whoever it is wants to buy it off our hands years from now. So, we have, we're protected.
But if the city wants, we buy this, and the city down the road, three, two, three years, decide to build a surface lot?
Yeah.
We're covered?
We're covered.
Mm-hmm. Hello, Leo.
Roll call? So, roll call on said motion to amend. Councillor Cronin is recused. Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
What? Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Ragman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tantar?
Yes.
For the record, councillor Vogel is recused. Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Connel?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
For many years, I've been against the purchase of a garage, but with these amendments that these four councillors have done, I vote yes.
Nine yes, two recused.
Motion to amend passes.
Motion to approve as amended.
Excuse me, should have asked this before. The second on the motion to amend was, thank you. Motion to approve is amended. Councillor Augeman seconded by? Roll call? Roll call on the motion to amend?
Discuss?
I'm sorry, motion approved?
Motion to approve. Mr. Earls? Just as an aside, I did, I did some kind of fuzzy math. Using their math, if we were to build a garage, it'd be about $28,000 per space. If we just lined it, basically, very little construction cost, we're about $38,000 a space. So, I was one, four years ago, when I actually ran, was three candidates running, one of three candidates running for mayor, I would like to see satellite parking. That was what I came out with. In fact, 2001, I believe it was, Mayor Mead at the time appointed me to a parking committee, and Mayor Lavender then extended my term on that committee when my freshman year of a city councillor back in 2002. Thanks, Al. Yeah, exactly. And I was always pushing for satellite parking at that point. I kept doing that, you know, 14 years later. I would like to see satellite parking instead of all in one place. However, the two candidates that ran four years ago were for satellite parking, basically, and not for a structured garage. But the one candidate who was for a structured garage did win. So, I had to give that some weight, that I had to start backing off the satellite parking because, well, to me, the public did speak in that vote. Maybe, I thought the vote would turn on the open waterfront. To me, that was a much more stronger, but it didn't seem to carry the day. The garage had some weight in that. So, I would still like to see satellite parking. However, there is a cost involved. My math, the best I can come up with is $38,000 a space compared to $28,000. So, there is a cost to it, which I would still like to investigate. So, again, I want the space. I'm really glad that the public, the purchase and sale agreement is the way it is now, but it doesn't mean a garage will necessarily go there. I may like to keep it for other reasons.
Roll call?
Roll call on motion approved?
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Augeman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Tantar?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Connel?
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Having nine needing eight, motion passive.
Motion to remove Order 29, grant acceptance.
The sunscreen, no? No, not the sun. We're not taking this. Motion to approve.
We had a question in committee. We did get the budget. Essentially, just very, very, very quickly, what the city for the 10 years has had a grant, which allowed it to do substance abuse, work in school. The condition of the grant is the city cannot repeat that and do it again. However, it can if it, if it provides a regional support. So, Newburyport along, is along with Amesbury School District, along with the Georgetown Schools District and the Triton School District, will, will continue, in essence, the program. It's critically needed, given what's happening with opioid and substance abuse. So, the committee with that information voted to approve.
I just was curious, how long will the grant fund the position? How many years?
Three.
So, but at the end of the three years, we don't intend to not have this position correct, so, what's, is the idea that we would absorb this back into our budget?
My understanding is we could apply again for a redo, right? Is that, I'll let you speak to it. Andy? Yes.
This, this is a three-year grant for this position. The goal of this position is really a year of community organizing, a year of community assessments, identifying regional needs, and then strategic planning and implementation. At the end of those three years, the funder, because it's not a grant, a federal fund, it's a private foundation, we have a lot, it's really wonderful, actually. It's really nice. So, we can build an ongoing relationship, and they have said that we can come back at the end of three years once we've identified the needs and do another piece. But we also have the option, once we've, once we've regionalized, to go back for federal funding, which we got two cycles of and couldn't apply again. But I will say that Mayor Holliday's been incredibly supportive as we, as our federal funds ended creating a part-time position, and so this allows us to go back to full-time and regionalize.
Just one other question, Mr. President. The regionalization portion of this, is that governed by an IMA, an intermunicipal agreement? How do we have a deal with other communities?
It will be. Right now, it's because we don't have the funds in place yet. When we went for the grant, we did ask for memorandums of agreement from each of the communities. Basically, the biggest piece that we're asking is that if we're paying for the youth survey to be done in all the districts, that they will facilitate that on their end. But I think once, once there's funding that is direct, any direct services, then we'll have to take more formal stuff.
So, is this going to pay 100% of that person's everything?
And fringe benefits, yeah, salary infringement, as well as funding for regional campaigns, trainings.
Well, I would just say then, I mean, I'm supportive of this, of course. It's a, it's a needed position. It's just, I think there's some sensitivity about IMAs recently because we haven't felt like we've had equitable conditions where other communities seem to use us as the administrator, and then we end up carrying those costs. And when they're raises, we end up carrying those costs, and over time, it does grow. So, I would just ask for your consideration as you move through this, that, you know, if an IMA does come in, obviously, it would come before us, but just for your eyes on that, that it's fair. And all that means is, whatever the deal is, as it grows and as it changes, everybody commits, you know?
Something.
Exactly, so that in five years, we don't look back and say, "Boy, we're really lopsided now. We're really carrying a lot because the person's salaries had to grow or benefits."
Our hope is actually to, for this to work more as almost a mentorship. It, just a little history of it, this came out of the opioid task force, that was the Essex County, and the realization that in the greater Newburyport area, we're the only community that had a really active prevention piece. So, we felt strongly that we could begin to reach out and help the communities around us do prevention as well as the intervention piece, that's the part that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor? Hi. My adjutant's findings is all done, Mr. President. We are all done. Join Ed?
Nothing to report, sir.
License and permits?
Nothing. I would like to make a note, though, however, that the communications 57, 58, and 59 are off the docket. We've dealt with those.
Point of order, should we receive and file them?
No, they were dealt with.
Okay.
Neighborhood City Services?
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to move that we take from committee Communication Number 68.
Second.
Motion received and filed?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion? Yeah, our committee met on this matter, and it was kind of an unusual discussion because, depending on where this particular kiosk, this particular table might be set up, was not clear from the letter where specifically it would be, and therefore, under whose jurisdiction it might fall. If it's in some parts of a large square area, it would be under the jurisdiction of the Park Commission. If it's in the bullnose, for example, it's some of the jurisdiction of the city council. So, what we decided to do was to receive and file this and allow the chair, myself, to go speak to the applicant and offer that as an opportunity that would not require, if they were in certain areas, action by either party. They could, by, by right, under the concept of issuing the opportunity to exercise free speech, actually speak to people in a public, in a public space, and that's the way we left it.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. I'm in concurrence, that was 2-0 in committee, which was councillor Connel and I. There was also no request for a table, so, this is essentially somebody who wants to speak to people. I mean, I don't really know that we could regulate that if we wanted to, besides the jurisdictional issues. So, hopefully, this will be an acceptable resolution for all, and I support receiving filing it at this time. filing it at this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd move that we take item, not ordinance, yes, ordinance, I'm sorry, 006.
Second.
Out of committee.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve with amendments.
Second for discussion.
Mr. President, we also discussed, discussed this item, the obvious problem being one of animal waste. I know we seem to spend an inordinate amount of time talking about it. You think that we were sewer commissioners and not city councilors. But, in, in fact, the intent is a good one, and that is to help the folks, our animal control officer, reasonably enforce the rules that we have in place by requiring them to, to go to dog walkers, people who are perhaps bringing their, their dogs into a public place, and requiring those folks to demonstrate that they have the capacity to pick up after the dog, because they can't put the eyes on every dog in every public place at any given time of the day. And we thought that portion of the proposal was reasonable. The second portion of it, which is the poor part that we would amend, is to eliminate by amendment the final two paragraphs making reference to the district court system. We thought that that was a little bit onerous, and perhaps beyond the, the purview of what we should be doing at this point, let's take another small step, hopefully assisting people in the cleanup and the protection of our public resources. So, that's the way we left it, so the amendment is to eliminate the final two paragraphs of the proposal that's on the clerk's desk.
Just for clarification, so it would end at the sentence where it says, ending is physically unable to comply with the requirements of this provision, where it starts, for the purpose of enforcing, we're striking that all the way to the end.
That's correct.
Mr. President.
And I'd yield to Counselor Agaman, the sponsor.
Yes, I attended the committee meeting, and I, I think that's all reasonable, just there was one thing that I caught after the meeting. The first sentence of the second paragraph, for the purposes of enforcing this provision, notices of violation may be issued and cetera. I'd like to keep that, if you'd accept that as a friendly amendment, and then I would agree to strike all the stuff about the police and the district court. But I do think we need to cite a chapter from the general laws so that it's clear that they can issue a ticket. That's, that's the only suggestion I would make.
Friendly amendment.
Yeah, I have no objection to that, as a friendly amendment to the amendments we've already proposed.
Just to be clear, counselor, so that sentence, would, the complete sentence, or would it end after general laws?
Oh, I beg your pardon, it would, it would end at the period. So all three lines, so delete everything starting with the word "any."
Got you.
To the end of the document, get rid of everything after, starting with the word "any."
Would end "or" by any police officer.
Correct.
Need to vote as amended?
So as I'm saying, if there's a motion approved as amended in the amendment, it's clear that we're striking the, the last sentence of the second paragraph and the third paragraph, if indeed that's a paragraph.
So, I guess this came out of committee with no real recommendation, if my recollection's correct. I don't know what to say, I'm very sympathetic to my colleague in Ward Two, I know I've been on the receiving end of many a dog call, both for folks that are in violation and are not picking up, and for people who got fined and said, well, it was my only time, and this and that, and it's, it's, how could this happen to me, and why don't you catch all the people that do it every day? So, I thi, I think unfortunately I'm going to vote against it, I just, I don't like the enforcement, I think, the concern would be that, the only way to enforce this is you have to walk by somebody and ask them, sort of pick them out, whereas an off-leash violation, you can observe from, from afar. So I'm really conflicted, and I really appreciate the, the intent, because I certainly have received those phone calls, as I said, but I just, I don't know how to wrap my head around it, so, for now, that's my thoughts.
Should I read it? So. Want me to read that? I was going to read it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So it's a, an amendment to Section 3-2, disposal of animal waste. It's not that long. All persons owning or in custody of an animal shall be responsible for the removal and disposal of that animal's waste. This is addition. No person shall appear with a dog in his or her custody on any sidewalk, gutter, street, or other public area, or on any private property neither owned nor occupied by such person without the means of removal of any feces left by such dog. The fine for the violation of this provision, first offense $50, second offense $75, third and subsequent offenses $100. This provision shall not apply to an animal accompanying any handicap person who by reason of his or her handicap is physically unable to comply with the requirements of this provision. Then we say, for the purpose of enforcing a provision, notices of violation may be issued pursuant to Section 21D of Chapter 40 of the general laws by the Board of Health, acting through its director, by any animal control officer or any police officer, period, and it's sponsored by Counselor Agaman.
Junta, you have a question?
I'm just wondering if this, see, I see, and maybe I'm interpreting this the wrong way, I see a bit of the opposite. I, I walk and I see different colored bags of, of dog dew all over the trails. So they have the bags, they pick it up, and for some reason, they just drop it on the ground, and I haven't figured that out yet. So, you know, there's a rainbow of bags as you're walking down the trail, as I'm walking my dog, and I'm saying to myself, why, why don't they just carry it down to the end of the trail, there's a barrel right there? So I'm not so sure the problem is people not having bags, I think the problem is, is they do have bags, I guess, I'm saying, they're just not being responsible, and I'm, I'm kind of being funny here, but, you know, whether they're, they're letting their dog do their mess and they have no bag at all, they're not being responsible, or whether they have the bags and then they just drop it wherever they bagged it, and then they keep walking. You know, we're, we're doing all sorts of different rules for dogs as we go along, at least my term as city councilor, trying to catch up with folks not being responsible. And I just think I see way more people bagging and then dropping than not having bags. So it's a tough one, it really is.
Sorry, Mr. President, we have spent, we do spend a lot of time on this topic.
Lot of time on dogs.
So, friend of mine was going through the packet and was looking at some of the stuff that we deal with, and the response was, what do you mean? What's the means? Can't they just pick it up? I mean, if they're facing a violation, there's nothing in here that says it has to be a bag. And I went, oh, I'll bring that point up.
Just pick it up.
Remember doing it again.
Well, I wouldn't want to reach in his pocket.
No.
I, I can't, I can't vote for this. It's taking this a step too far. Yes, it's a problem, but you're, you're criminalizing, so to speak, behavior that's not, you're not doing anything, you're walking down the street. What if I had a dog, and my dog would poop, I had a bag, picked it up, I deposited it appropriately, for 100 yards from my house, police officer pulls me over and says, where's your bag? Papers, I mean, plastic, well, and I'm, and I am really confused. Do we have a fine in the plastic bag ordinance? There's some irony here, but I, it's just too close, we're going to have police officers pulling people over, or walking up to people and saying, show me your plastic bag, and nothing has, the ordinance says you have to clean up after your dog, but that's because the dog has soiled. What if you scooped it up with your hand and walked home with it and dropped it into the toilet? I mean, you solved the problem that everybody's complaining about. So, but the big one is, I have a plastic bag, I've taken my, my, I used to do this, and then I, you know, and I walked home, my dog didn't go bathroom, so now we're saying, you actually have to have two bags at all times, just in case your dog poops again. What if your dog poops 100 yards from your house, you run back and get shovelled, and you pick it up, and you run it back to your house, and you bury it in your compost pile? I mean, I just, this is going too far.
Counselor Agaman?
Okay, on rebuttal. So first, the language comes from the Boston City Code, so I didn't invent it, this is something that's been tried elsewhere. So the law already deals with, and rainbow is a good way to put it, we have a rainbow of antisocial behavior in Newburyport, just a rainbow. So, yeah, some people do, I see that, they just drop the plastic bags, oh, someone will pick it, my servant will pick that up for me.
Right.
And then, and then there is a lot of, I see it at Mosley Woods, it's notorious on Clipper Rail Trail, people don't even bother with the plastic bags. So, I don't really think this imposes a police state, again, as a, I was willing to, and I am willing to cut all the stuff about district court, that's fine, but it's a good tool to give the animal control officer, and the answer to Counselor Largis' question is, you just carry two bags, okay? Just carry two bags. So, you know, and I'm trying desperately to remedy a nagging situation. If I don't have six votes, okay, but that's my rebuttal.
Roll call. Motion to approve with the amendment. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
No.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Pacing our time.
And we didn't have to argue over the shape of the table. Nothing further this time, Mr. President. Three zoning amendment hardship for variances.
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion approved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the, the zoning amendment regarding the hardships, and I passed out, you do have it in your packet, actually, I think that should be pretty, pretty complete. We met jointly with the planning board last week, which seems like an eternity ago, we voted 3 to 0 in favor of this, the Newburyport Preservation Trust also spoke in favor of this, and basically, by deleting a portion of this ordinance, it puts us more in compliance with state statute, and closes a loophole that some developers and their attorneys have used to claim hardship for a parcel of land, and then build in a way that's really not in the, in the, in accordance with what we intend our zoning to do, so we ask that you support it.
I don't know if there's any opposition, but I need a supermajority on this, it's not like dogs, so I don't want to leave it to chance. Just to be clear, the consultant, hired consultant expert to the city on our rezoning two years ago told us that this very section did not comply with state law. That went out to everybody on the zoning advisory committee, every member of the Board of Appeals, nothing changed. Then in April, the city solicitor, Jonathan Eichman, wrote an opinion at the behest of the planning director confirming, yes, it really is totally illegal, you can't do this, get rid of it. And still, you know, Board of, zoning Board of Appeals didn't care, and they used it anyway. So I would ask, again, this is obviously illegal under state law, please just adopt it, and let's clean up our act. Thank you.
Counselor Connell?
Love and brief. Part of the conversation we had also revisited the issues that we had spoken to about a year ago, I believe it was in March a year ago, so it's more than a year ago, regarding the procedures used by the zoning Board of Appeals. This is a difficult job, we all acknowledge that, but one of the recommendations we had made then, that have not acted upon, and I bring it up for this reason in public again, is the need to go through some of the training that's, that offered, that's offered to them through Master Municipal Association and other entities, that might be able to assist them in kind of refining the way in which they deliberate on material, on, on different matters before them. So I stand to remind them in public of that recommendation we made, and the recommendation with which they tacitly agreed at that time. And I believe the chair was going to speak to the chair of the, the chair of Planning Development's going to speak to the chairman of the zoning Board of Appeals to convey that message as well, and that was part of our discussion with the planning board.
I'm in support of this. I just wanted to say a couple things that I thought were telling that I heard during the committee meeting. One is, this is an odd way to grant a variance. In other words, there are other statutes you can use to provide the same variance that you would give under this, so it seems nonsensical to me to have this if it's in conflict with state law. That's number one, and number two is, this doesn't completely eliminate the hardship provision, because I did have some folks contact me about that. It retains the exceptional narrowness, essentially, part A is simply moved up into the rest of the paragraph. So, I have some other comments I'd like to make, but I'll reserve them for the next item, but I am in support of this, and, I mean, it's against state law, what, you know, what else is there to say? It's got to go. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So this, the ordinance three, which I have, which amends 10H6D, paragraph D reads as follows. Following circumstances may be construed as establishing a basis for determining that a hardship exists within the meaning of this section. This is new. Where by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or unusual shape of a specific site at the time of the effective date of this chapter to which this is amended, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions, or other extraordinary and exceptional physical situations or condition of such site of property, the literal enforcement of the requirements of this chapter pertaining to yards or other space relationships, or total land area would result in exceptional practical difficulties, or exceptional or undue hardship under the owner, upon the owner of such property. That added, the existing subparagaphs one and two are stricken.
Roll call. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin? Counselor Earl?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Up and zip, force reading.
Mr. President, motion to remove item?
Four?
Four, ordinance four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to amend. I think we, we have to get the amendments.
Okay, yeah, motion to approve as amended. And I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Mr. President, so the packet information, the information for the packet was due on June 6, and we didn't have a meeting until the 7th. So, on the 7th, the committee unanimously adopted a series of amendments, I have given them to the clerk so that he has the master copy, it's color-coded, I would ask him to read them, but just briefly on them, he'll get to those details, but on the merits, what we discussed with the planning board, and the planning board concurred, essentially, we found through practice, and the hard way, we, our building commissioner is overwhelmed in enforcing both zoning and building code. I'd point out, there is a new edition of the building code coming into effect this year. He processes, by his own estimate, over 900 permits a year out of his office. So with that, I, I hope that the council will see the wisdom of having a full-time, empowered zoning administrator, someone whose job it is to interpret the zoning code and help out everybody else in the city, coordinate with the building inspector, coordinate with the zoning board, coordinate with the planning board, so that there's one person on the job doing that. And note that the ordinance would not take effect until January 1st, 2018. That was at the request of the administration, they have hired a part-time zoning enforcement person, and they need that person to be trained and grow into the role, and they need to know that they have enough time, so we wanted to give them enough time. For that, I will yield to the city clerk to read the amendments.
I'm going to read the red. So first change would be administrative officials, which said shall hold office, it now says shall hold office from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, and two-year terms thereafter. Second change, subparagraph four, under inspector buildings and of the zoning administrator, to change the word "him" in the second paragraph to "them." Likewise, at the top of page four, same paragraph, "him" to "them." Under 10X5, appeals 5C, at the bottom, last sentence, stated, city council, that, we added the word "the" zoning Board of Appeals, shall require, shall, and "the" were added. On, conforms to performance standards, third line, we change the word "triplicate" to "quadruplicate." to "quadruplicate." Under historic masonry, subparagraph three, instead of SPCA, we included, inserted, the building commissioner shall review. And then at the end of that sentence, instead of it ending at closed perenns after standards, we added, such as Robert C. Mack and John P. Spaywick, preservation brief to repointing mortar joints in historic masonry buildings. And I believe that is it.
That's all.
Counselor Zee?
I'm rising in support of this, but I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make. If, I attended the committee meeting last week, and I'd like to just say some of my comments I made. First of all, I don't take creating any new position lightly financially or operationally. I think we spend a lot of time in this room trying to figure out how we can add people for everything in the city that we'd love to do and love to accomplish. So the argument was made, and I think rightfully so, that the building fees are sufficient to cover this position, and it certainly seems like a very logical line to go from building fees into this position. So that's number one. Number two is, I do want to say on the record that I have some hesitations about this, what will the efficacy be of this in terms of solving what we perceive to be the problems? And I said this in committee, that I spent a lot of time thinking about what are the problems. I believe that the sponsor of this has met my bar, that it's worth a try, that this is a good, this is something that's done in other communities. It has a value, it has a merit, and probably the most, the biggest and most compelling argument is that the building inspector needs to focus on building codes, which is very different from zoning. So, you know, while I have those hesitations, I am in support. The two things I want to say that really concern me overall is, number one is, I think we have extremely deep divisions on, particularly on infill, having sat through some of the master plans, and it's my opinion that that isn't going to be resolved through our zoning boards and what have you. That has to be resolved here in this room. We've had several master plan meetings, I've attended a number of them. I don't know that we're getting any closer, but what I'm saying is, you know, to be fair to the boards, we have to be able to resolve amongst us, as the board that does zoning, what exactly it is we do want. Because in my opinion, there are a number of projects where it's not really a zoning violation per se that makes people unhappy, it's just they don't like the project, because it's a bad project for the neighborhood and what have you. And the last one is, another argument I heard at the committee meeting was that there is increasing complexity being attached to the zoning board decisions. So one was mentioned, that there was a planning board decision that had 26 pages of conditions. On the one hand, that's a good thing, because, you know, you're being specific. On the other hand, what are we doing that we're having to write 26-page decisions? Is that a failing of our zoning code that we simply haven't covered enough bases? It just starts to make you wonder, you know, what's a reasonable number of conditions? How many, and I've asked the planning director for statistics, how many projects should go before these boards? How do we compare to other communities? So I'm voting for this. I want to thank the Ward II council for his work on it, and I'm very hopeful that it does help solve some of the problems. But I wanted to go on record as saying, I don't think it's going to solve all of them, and I'm hoping that the master plan gets us somewhere we need to go. Thank you.
Roll call. Motion approved as amended. Ordinance number four. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Approved as the first reading. Nothing else? All in favor? Go ahead. Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion to remove, communication 6D, block party, present. Run. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion to remove, communication 63, slow bike race. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next. Motion to remove, Newburyport Lions Club Yankee Homecoming Race.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next. Motion to remove, order 25, Parkland Hills Court. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion approved. Second. Discussion. Go ahead.
This is just to codify Hills Court, which we approved last meeting regarding taking over some park, 18 spaces of parking from the federal government, and this just puts it in line with the rest of the parking lots.
Counselor Zee?
Just a brief question. I noticed in the last paragraph that there's a change to how soon vehicles need to be removed from lots following snow. That's going to apply to all lots. It's 12 hours now instead of 24. Do I have that right? In case of declared snow emergency, vehicles may remain in lots for a duration of a snow emergency and for 12 hours after the end of the snow emergency. So we are changing it from 24 to 12.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes. Traffic Safety Advisory Committee was in full approval of this. Quite frankly, I'd like it to be reduced to slightly less, to allow DPS to get in, but that's, that seems like a reasonable time. If it stops snowing at, say, eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock at night, it gives residents till the morning. So that's why I went for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next.
Motion to remove, I'll try this one, motion to remove collectively order 26 and order 30.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve both handicap spaces.
Next. Counselor Cronin? I'll yield to the Ward II council on Parsons Street. Summit place is for the Newburyport Ball Field, and this was the closest place for a handicap location near the field.
Very quickly, the residents at 13 Parsons Street contacted me, and one of, one of the residents is handicapped. There is a sunset clause of two years, which is our normal practice, discuss with the parking clerk. We're all set on this one. Please vote for it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Public utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Brief meeting. Did I make your report? Go to the order.
Mr. President?
Zee?
I just wanted to say that we had the mayor's office arrange for a meeting at the sewer plant, the wastewater treatment plant, last week, on eight residents on the earlier project. Seems like a timely thing, now it's 90 degrees outside, and everybody knows that's usually when we have trouble. It was a successful meeting, and the project is moving along, and the engineer came. Residents, and especially those who are butters and neighbors, got to come, so I just wanted to give that brief update, that the project is progressing, parts that were ordered are now coming in, and the contractors mobilizing. So if anybody wants more details, you can probably contact me or the Ward II council.
Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, just briefly, I was making it up early. I wanted to recognize the chief administrative officer, Paul O'Brien, and also the planning director, Andy Port, for the work that they did in pulling together the conference call on the garage. That, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't do it during the meeting on Tuesday night, and they really pulled through, and I appreciate that.
Oh, no.
Aye.
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 Aye.